We did have a work session at 6:00 PM in the planning room, which is just to my right and to the back, and our residents and the public are always welcome to attend. So here we are for a regular session at 7:00 PM. We appreciate all those in attendance. We excused Richard Higginson, who is out of town, and we welcome, and will more officially welcome Kate Bradshaw, our newest city councilwoman right here. We're so glad to have you, Kate, and we'll get you a chance to express yourself in a little bit after, after we make you official. So we'll begin tonight, as we always do, with a pledge of allegiance, and we'll ask Gary Bowers if he'll come and lead us in a pledge.
The audience please arise. Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the flag for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated.
Thank you, Gary. We're privileged tonight also to have President Jared Wendell from the Orchard State, Bountiful Orchard State, here in the south end of our, of our city, and we'll ask him if he'd come up and offer a word of prayer. Thank you, President.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful for the blessings that we all share, grateful for the freedoms and the rights that we share as a city and as a nation. We ask thee to bless that the leaders of nations and the leaders of governments will have wisdom and be able to balance and lead and take care of the stewardships for which they have stewardship. We ask thee to bless that thy Spirit may reside in this meeting as we discuss and strive to lead and make decisions for our city, and these things we pray for in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, President Wendell. With that, we'll turn some, some time over to Shawna, our city recorder. Shawna Andrus, thank you.
I, Kate Bradshaw, do solemnly swear, that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of Utah, and that I will discharge the dues of my office with fidelity.
Kate, any comments as you start your service here in Bountiful City?
Well, I'm excited to have been chosen. There were so many wonderful and qualified applicants. I was pleasantly surprised to be picked because there were so many wonderful neighbors who came and offered their time and talents as well, and I think the city would have been really well-served with, with just about anybody that, that put their application forward. I'm excited to be picked, humbled to be selected, and looking forward to learning more and offering my time and talents and energy to our city.
Thank you very much, Kate. Very well said. Anything from the council? Please.
Get to work.
Get to work. There you go.
Welcome.
I'm the privileged one. I get to sit between two neat ladies.
There you go. Well, again, thank you very much for, for all of you being here, and we're going to have now our comment time, public comments, for the next potential 10 minutes maximum, and for each individual a two-minute time limit. So if there are any one, if there's anyone here in the audience that would like to make a public comment, we're happy to have you come. We do have a public hearing, so if it has something to do with the public hearing tonight, you can just wait until that time if you'd like to. It is now open for public comment. Wow, Gary, that would have been a first. With that, we'll, we'll move on with the agenda, and I'll look for approval of the minutes from our last meeting. Are there any corrections or additions?
There's one correction, but it's my fault. I referred to the BCYC representative as Abby Childs, but her last name is Child with no S, so I'm sorry. That is my fault, but if we could make that correction to the minutes, I'd like to move that we approve those minutes with that correction.
Second.
Mayor, I'd like to make a correction also.
Okay.
On page five, on page five of our agenda tonight, line 45 and 46, Councilman Chris Simonson was recognized for his hard work and dedication for many years in organizing and bringing about this park. Closed remarks were, "Let's build the damn thing."
Hey, hey, hey.
I didn't say that.
Yes, you did.
I didn't say that.
No, no, no.
No, I didn't say that. We need to, we need to add to the minutes that it was the honorable, past military-service Army Fellow, John Mark Knight, that made that statement.
Good. We're going to attribute that to expletive to him?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, with those, with those corrections and additions, are there any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Oh, gosh. Okay. Well, we're approving them anyway, because we have a majority. We do have a little fun up here, for those of you who maybe were here for the first time. John Mark, we'll start with council reports. Anything from you?
Well, what an exciting week. We're glad to see you come on board, Kate, and glad to see that we're moving forward with the Plaza and the, and we had the ice rink discussion, and I just think that those, those projects are just going to be absolutely wonderful for the city and will be, I'm just looking so forward to it, and that's it.
Thanks, John Mark. Kendall, then, please.
I have nothing to report.
And Chris.
Mayor, I'd just like to report and, and thank you for your conducting the tree-lighting ceremony Monday. It was wonderful. It was a beautiful event. We had choirs from the junior highs there singing. We had donuts, we had hot chocolate, and the lights came on at the right moment, and, Mayor, that was wonderful. I think that's the biggest crowd, crowd I've been to for one of those tree lightings. It was good.
We'll wait till next year. It'll be good.
Yes.
And Kate, anything?
I don't have anything to report. Just looking forward to getting up to speed.
Good. Appreciate it. And with that, the BCYC?
So, not tonight.
Nothing tonight, and we'll consider approval of weekly expenditures greater than $1,000 that were paid out on November 5th and the 12th, 2018. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I didn't see anything that, that I had a question about. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the financial invoices for, that were paid November 5th and November 12th as, as presented by staff.
Thank you.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also passes. We're going to turn some time now, let's see. Yes, thank you. We'll sort of turn some time over to, yeah, thank you.
Mayor, Council, I'm privileged tonight to stand before you and help recognize Judge Glenn Dawson tonight. He's been our, he's been a state court judge here in the state for, how many years, Judge Dawson?
Twenty-four years.
Twenty-four years, and he's coming up on retirement here this next month, and he's been our, we've been privileged to have our city calendar in front of him for that entire time?
Probably about 22 years of it.
Twenty-two years of it. I've only been here about two of those. There's people that have probably worked with him a lot longer and could say a lot more, but I just want to tell you how grateful I am for his service to the community, how, how great he's been. He is a kind, honest judge that has given people the consideration that they deserve, but he's also been an excellent judge with interpreting, understanding, and applying the law fairly, case in and case out. We, we have a busy calendar with me and the city, all the misdemeanors that come through the city I prosecute, and Judge Dawson's been the judge for those, and he also has his, his very busy calendar with mental health court and state felonies and other things that he's doing as a state court judge, and I just want to thank him and his wife Sue for being here tonight, and we have flowers if you want to come up, and I think the mayor has something to honor ring to.
That's not too uncomfortable for you. I think they have something I'd like to read.
I'll just be brief.
Please, Judge Dawson.
Mayor, it has just been a privilege and an honor for me to serve the State of Utah, the city of Bountiful for over these, over 20 years. It's just been an honor, and it's been great to work with the city employees. We're residents of the city. We love living here. I think these flowers should go to Sue. When we, when we got the, it was very routine that we'd get calls at 2:00 in the morning from the police because they've, not because Sue and I were fighting, but because they would want to bring search warrants and have to sign them early in the morning, and whenever they called, Sue was always the one who answered the phone and politely invited them up to our home, and when they came to our home, I hope the chief will remember, Sue always had cookies ready for the officers when they dropped in to have those search warrants reviewed, and, and so anyway, I think the, the flowers are for her, for all of her fine efforts, but it's been a, it's been an honor to be able to sit in this beautiful building that you've built across the way here, and I couldn't be more appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. We appreciate you so much. We'd like you to just stay right where you are as I read this, this note here, and it is addressed to the Honorable Judge Glenn R. Dawson. On behalf of Bountiful City, I want to thank you for the decades of outstanding service you provided to our community, Davis County, and the State of Utah as second district court judge in the Bountiful Division. Your efforts to faithfully and independently serve have not gone unnoticed. You have been a model of integrity, impartiality, and patience. You have held the public, court staff, attorneys, police agencies, and prosecutors to the highest standards. For this, we cannot thank you enough. We appreciate the time and expertise you have shared for the benefit of so many others. The numbers of lives you have positively impacted is great. Thanks again, once again, for your service. We wish you the best as you embark on your next adventure.
Yes.
And this, this letter we will have framed and give to you at a, at a later time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your service. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
Please, please, please.
I just wanted to take just a few minutes. I've known Judge Dawson the entire time that he's been here. I've, I've been a police officer in Bountiful for over 30 years, so I've worked with judges before, I've worked with judges that have come after, and someone like Judge Kate, they're still here, and I have the greatest respect for Judge Dawson and have appreciated just what he has done for the citizens of Davis County and the citizens of Bountiful. You know, as an officer, you always are passionate about your case and, and, you know, the investigation that's gone into that, but it doesn't always necessarily go the way you expected, but you're comforted in knowing that you have a judge like Judge Dawson who is sitting there weighing out all the facts, listening to the evidence, and is willing to do what he feels is right based on that training and the, really, the decorum that is required of a judge, and to rise above so much of the petty things that happen and, and that we see all the time. I've always appreciated that he's been able to do that, and I've appreciated the relationship. I have eaten the cookies at their house, and I have to tell you, that is the only judge I have ever responded to a home where they have cookies ready for us, and it's almost like you're coming home, you know, in the evening time and, and sitting down for a meal, but it's hard to get awakened in the middle of the night, but to have his wife there as well and inviting us in and entertaining us while he was reading through the warrants, and so I, I miss those days, and, but I did want to take this opportunity to say thank you.
Chief, Chief, before you go, could I make one comment, Mayor?
Okay? Sure.
You have a black stripe on your badge. Would you take a moment and tell us why?
Well, as everyone is, I'm sure, well aware from watching the news and losing, having another fallen officer that's in the State of Utah in South Salt Lake, and as a show of respect for his service and for the loss of his life in, in providing that service to his community and to the residents of South Salt Lake and in the state, law enforcement wears the, the band over the badge to show that our hearts are heavy, and, you know, as a, a police chief now in, in Bountiful, and I'm finishing my 12th year, worried all the time about that call and that response that comes in that potentially ends the life of one of our officers in, in their service. In talking with chiefs that have gone through this, and certainly, you know, knowing the chief in South Salt Lake very well, Jack, and my heart just breaks to, to watch, you know, the family go through this, the, the agency go through this, and I think our whole state feels the pain from that, so that, that's, as we go through that process. So thank you for, you know, making that a public awareness and that people understand that, the cost that comes with protecting our freedoms. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
She said I could still come up for cookies.
Hey, I might also note, Judge, that I know that Clint, our city attorney, Clint Drake, really wanted to be here also and say how much you have meant to him, and, but he is, I guess, really under the weather, so he was not able to meet, to make it, but we, we really appreciate those who have taken a hand for him and spoken in your behalf. Thank you.
Well, we've worked with some great people, J.C. and Charles Keen, and so many good people.
That's true. Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Sue. Item number nine, we'll turn some time over to Chad.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The first item we're going to look at tonight is essentially a reapplication for an approval of a site plan that the council issued back in April of 2017. It was on this property. We call it Pad A. It's part of Renaissance Town Center. You'll notice 15th South here, Main Street, the roundabout, the, the large medical tower there on Renaissance Town Drive. So this application was originally approved in 2017. We issued an extension back in April of this year, a six-month extension. That extension expired in October, and so the applicant has reapplied for approval in order to keep this an active project. We're very close to the issuance of building permits, but we need to have an active approval in order to issue those. The, the primary reason that we have expirations of these approvals is in case codes change. We want to make sure that a, a project can't be approved and just be approved forever with codes that change over time. In this case, there haven't been any significant code changes. We've talked to our building official, we've looked at our zoning code. There haven't been any significant code changes in the last year and a half, so we do feel comfortable recommending approval, reappraisal of this preliminary and final site plan. Just to remind you of what that's going to look like.
Wow, that's wild.
Wow.
It looks a lot like the Grand Tetons. They did a great job on that. That's what it looks like, right there. This is the proposed building. It's a mixed-use building, residential on top, commercial on the bottom floors. These are a couple of pictures of the site plans. Not any substantial changes since you approved it the first time. Again, here are some elevation views of that building from the corner of 15th South and Renaissance, the rear sides. This is kind of a oblique look at it from the one, one angle, but good attention to detail. It does have a connection to our existing parking garage. You can see that there in the back. They will use some of that parking for their required parking for the site. So with that, the planning commission did take a look at this. They passed along a recommendation of approval for this with two conditions. Those two conditions are, one, that this be limited to six months. We're, we're very close to approval of a building permit on this, so we, we would like to recommend that this, that the building permit has to be obtained within the next six months, and the second one had to do with some disabled person parking. We just need to change some, adjust some dimensions. So with that, we are recommending approval.
Chad, just one question. So what is the timeline? Is there a projection of when this project will begin?
Well, as far as getting the building permit issued, we're, I don't know, Bruce, within a few weeks of building permit issuance, we're very close. We were, we were very close before this expired, so.
I see.
So it's, it's.
So sooner, sooner than later, I take it, Bruce? Thank you.
Mayor, could I ask?
I'll ask a question.
Sure.
On, we have the two recommendations. I have my office in a dental building, and we've seen that the citizens of Bountiful are aging, and we have here at least one of the parking spot spaces should be developed for a van accessible for disabled persons parking space. I'd like to see it moved up to two at least.
The code is, is one, one van accessible with lots of other accessible spaces.
It meets the code.
Yeah, it meets, it meets the, the minimum disabled person parking requirement of the ADA.
But the developer could take into account and increase it?
They could, yeah, but they, the van, that doesn't mean they won't have more accessible spaces, but that van accessible space would be the, the difference there, so.
Okay, I see.
Mr. Mayor, that we approve this mixed-use development on Pad A at the Renaissance Town Center.
I'll wait for a second. Thank you for the second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Chad? Bruce?
Thank you.
And we'll turn some, the next item also over to you.
Okay. I'm going to come up to the podium for this one.
Okay.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, council. The next item we're going to talk about is a proposed amendment to the driveway standard, driveway and parking standards for single-family residential zones and uses in our city. Just by way of background, you'll remember, a few months ago, we received a request to look at our, our parking and driveway standards for single-family residential from a local resident. The council directed us to take a look at those standards, and we've spent the last several weeks looking at those standards. People that were involved in that review were our public works inspector, our city engineer, our, our public safety folks, all had a, had a chance to weigh in on these, our streets division had a chance to weigh in on some of these standards that we've been looking at, so we have had a variety of people looking at these standards and possible changes that we could make. I want to just go through a couple of things really fast.
Can I just ask, and you're, and as you were talking to these experts, some of these different people that were the planning commission, et cetera, do you think that you really looked at, do you think that you kind of were able to get out of the box a little bit and try to be creative to think about what possible solutions there may be? Do you think there was?
Yeah, let me, let me explain them to you, and I think you'll see kind of what we did.
Yeah, thank you.
So there, as we looked at these standards, we received direction from the council that there is a couple of things we didn't want to touch, and that was our open space requirements for front yards and also the, the separation standards. So outside of those kind of parameters is what we looked at, but there's some, there's some things that we did look at in terms of possible solutions, and this also went to the planning commission. I'll talk a little bit about their recommendations in a moment. If we look at three, I guess there's three major components that the planning commission looked at as far as a recommendation to you. The first of those was to reduce the side yard access width from 12 feet to eight feet. I want to show you why that would, why that would make a difference. I'm going to bring up several pictures, and hopefully they'll illustrate what we're talking So currently, you can provide parking in a rear yard if you have access through an approved driveway around to the back of the home. Right now, there's a minimum of 12 feet required for that accessway. So folks that build at the minimum eight-foot setback are precluded from accessing those areas. As we talked about it, it is tight. We do want to make sure the council knows that eight feet is not, it's, it's not a spacious driveway. That is a very tight space to get a car through, but we do feel that if someone wanted, elected to do that, that that would be fine. They could, they could make that work. With the caveat that it would have to be eight feet of clear space, not just eight feet of setback, there are homes that have eight feet of setback that have door stoops or window wells, projections that would make that still impossible, less than eight feet. So we did feel that eight feet was the, the minimum necessary, or minimum required, but that would open up, you know, a, a number of additional parking opportunities for folks as they could access those rear yard areas, either in, in garages or in parking areas, approved parking areas. Our code does not, does not prohibit parking in the rear yard as long as you can get back to it. There's a prohibition on the, I, I should say, there's a restriction on the amount of paved area you can have in that backyard. It's 50%. You have to have at least 50% open space, but you can park in that backyard area. So that was one recommendation that the planning commission looked at, and there's actually a better picture of that in your packet, in the ordinance that was proposed by the planning commission, and let me grab that real fast, get a page number for you. But it shows kind of that window well scenario, and that, that picture would be proposed to be included in the code. That's on page 53 of your packet. So you can kind of see in that case, and I'm going to come back to this figure again in just a moment, but that, that shows you what we're talking about there with a window well in that clear area. I'll try to find that in just a minute. So that was, I guess, number one recommendation. The second was to provide some additional opportunities for parking on corner lots. Right now, we have some pretty strict restrictions on where you can park in a corner lot side yard. The code currently states that you can't park or have a vehicle access from a corner lot side yard. These are two, two examples of corner lots that I'll get to. Without, I'm going to zoom this in a little bit so we can see both those pictures at the same time. Wrong way. No, let's go the right way. Okay. So these are two kind of typical corner lot scenarios. Right now, in order to park or, park or have a driveway from that corner lot side yard, you'd have to have an approved garage or carport back in this rear yard area. As we looked at that, and we had a couple of scenarios that we looked at actually out in the, in the city where there were places where parking maybe could make sense without necessarily needing a garage or carport. This is one example of that. If you look at this particular driveway approach, and we've, we've worked with this homeowner a little bit on this that we actually have, you're going to see an illegal ramp there, and this is a person that's been interested in some changes. What they've done is they have a fenced area, and they'd like to be able to park a vehicle behind. They don't have a garage or carport, so now we, as the code stands, we can't approve a driveway approach there. But one thing we thought was that if we changed that standard to allow for someone to park in that corner lot side yard, provided they had a minimum setback and some minimum fencing screening requirements, that that could be an appropriate way to provide some additional parking, off-street parking. So the code language basically requires that you, you have to have a screening fence, and you have to have a minimum setback of 10 feet. The reason why that's important, I'm going to go back to these figures, we have a vision clearance area at these driveways, and as people pull out of their driveways, pull out of these areas, if we get them too close to the sidewalk, that can cause problems, and especially where we're requiring them to have some screening, if we have that screening fence too close, then you're going to have problems with safety, really. It's safety of people pulling out of that driveway and potentially hitting someone that they can't see. So the requirement as proposed would be to allow for some parking, doesn't have to be within a garage, but it would have to be setback at least 10 feet from the property line, and it would have to meet any kind of vision clearance area. So in this case, this would also meet that code. They brought their fence out the rest of the way on the corner. They brought their fence out the rest of the way on the corner lot, but they pulled the fence back 10 feet so you can meet those vision clearance requirements. One other example of that would be a scenario where someone wanted to come off of this side of their yard, so this would be the front of the house, this would be the corner lot side yard, if someone wanted to provide a little extra parking around the side. Right now, that's not allowed on a corner lot. In this case, we will allow that, provided they have a 10-foot setback and some kind of a screen, screening fence. So that is another proposal that was put forward by the planning commission. The third of these was just to provide additional driveway opportunities for very large lots. We have lots that are big enough to certainly accommodate another driveway without serious impacts to traffic and to some of those issues we've looked at. So in those cases, if a lot's bigger than an acre, has more than 150 feet of frontage, a third driveway would be, would be allowed. Right now, our limit is two driveways. So that would allow that third driveway under limited circumstances. So I want to talk a little bit about an option that the planning commission actually did not forward to you because they had some concerns. We talked about this option with them. I kind of glided by it a few minutes ago, but we talked about the possibility of allowing some additional parking in the front yard, provided there's a buffer area to screen that parking from the, from the street. We had a lot of discussion about this standard with the planning commission. There's actually examples that I don't know the history of, so I'm not going to pretend that, you know, whether these are legal or not, I couldn't tell you. But they, they certainly don't meet our current code, maybe a previous, oh, that's great. We might have to start that again. But a previous version of the code, I might have a picture of that without Google Earth. Let's try that one. Yeah, there it is. So this is a person that's built a little parking area in front of the house. Our current code does not allow parking between the front of the house and the street. You can see they've set it back, they've got some landscape buffer in front of that house. This is on Fourth North. So it's an option. It's something that, that could be done. The concern that the planning commission had was aesthetics. Certainly, these folks have taken, you know, they've got, they've got a huge area of landscaping, they've done kind of a minimum area of parking, and the concern that the planning commission had is that not everybody will do that. Not everybody will take the same care of those landscape areas, and they were concerned about the number of vehicles that would be in those front yard areas, having vehicles between the house and the street. So they did not pass that along as a recommendation. They specifically asked us to leave that out. Couple of other things that I wanted to just talk about before we open up the public hearing related to the reasons why we think it's important to follow the direction we received from you in maintaining those open space requirements for front and backyards. You know, part of, part of these standards is aesthetics, and making sure that we don't have just pavement in these front yard areas, or the rear yard for that matter. There's a number of reasons for that, besides just beautification and making sure we have that, that Bountiful City look and feel. It's also to be able to make sure we have enough stormwater, ability to absorb stormwater during a storm event. Anytime we make impervious surfaces in the city, that creates additional runoff into our system and additional impacts on, on systems that weren't necessarily sized for that much runoff. That's part of the low-impact development standards that the state has adopted, is that we try to maintain as much pervious surfaces as we can. So besides just the aesthetics reasons, there's other good reasons why it's important to, to maintain open space in those front yard areas. In terms of the spacing standards, we've talked a little bit about this. There's a number of reasons why spacing standards are important. For one, it provides some, some area for additional on-street parking in the summer. We know that's not a winter issue, but in the summer, it does provide for some on-street parking. It provides for places for trash pickup, where you can put your trash cans and not impede your neighbor's ability to get out of their driveway. It allows for some on-street snow storage, provides access to fire hydrants. There's a number of reasons why we feel it's a good idea to maintain that minimum spacing standard that we have between driveways. Okay, so with that, I want to talk just about a few small changes that we've made to the code. We've had some numbering changes that we needed to make to the code. We've had some, some confusion about how our, our steep slope standards were included in our single-family residential code. So we've got some numbering changes you'll see in the, in the code to make some clarification for where those standards apply. We've also added some clarification provisions related to accessory structures that, that they do have to have, if you have a garage in your backyard, it needs to be paved back to that garage area. That was already in the code, but we've made that addition, we've put some additional language to make that more clear. I think that might be it. We've also clarified the open space requirements a little bit, just to make sure that that's crystal clear of what we're talking about for the percentages. I think those are the major changes. So with that, I'd be happy to, well, before I do that, before I take questions, I do want to talk, just because the planning commission did have some concern, we, the way that we presented this to the planning commission was to go first through a work session, like what we do with the council, and talk to them about the issue. You were aware of the issue because you were the ones that received the petition and, and gave us direction. They weren't, so we went to the planning commission and explained that to them. A couple of the planning commissioners questioned why there needed to be a change, and it's, it's a good question. So, you know, for the most part, these standards that we have work very well. We have an existing process that allows for exceptions. It's called a variance. We approve those occasionally when there's, when they're warranted, when they meet the state criteria for, for a variance. So there, there is already an avenue or a method, if someone can meet those state criteria and show that they, they meet the criteria from state law, that they can obtain an exception from the rules. So one of the actions you can take tonight is simply not to change the standards. You don't have to adopt these standards as proposed. You can also, you can, you can adopt the standards as proposed from the planning commission, or you can give us additional direction to go back and work some more things over and come back to you with any revisions that you'd like us to look at. We talk about, we have sections in our staff report, you're very familiar with these because you read these staff reports every week, but one of the, one of the sections is significant impacts. This is one we really feel could have significant impacts on, on Bountiful City. You know, especially visual impacts, depending on, and I think that was the concern of the planning commission, was that if we include too much additional parking in the front yards, that that would have a significant visual impact on, on Bountiful City. So I want to make sure that, you know, that in making this recommendation, in representing the planning commission's recommendation, that we do feel as staff that this, this could have, has the potential to have some impacts on the look and feel of Bountiful City. And we would agree with the planning commission's recommendation not to include that front yard parking for that reason. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions if I can.
Chad, could I ask a question? As I've read through this, I find there's areas that are in yellow. I don't understand what the yellow means. I understand the blue, but say on page 41, there's orange, and then right below it, it said the same thing again, but it was in blue.
Yeah, so those are just different people, different versions of this. As we've, as we've gone through the review process, we've made additional changes, so that just reflects a new version. So anything that's underlined is new text, regardless of the color.
Okay, so the color doesn't mean-
No, just, just means that somebody, as we were reviewing it, said we ought to clarify that, and we made one additional change, and so that was like version two or version three.
I see, okay.
So that's reflected in those changes.
Yep.
Thanks, that's a good question.
Any other questions to Chad?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. With that, we will open this up to a public hearing, and we invite those who wish to speak to please come up to the microphone, and, and you're now invited to speak. Yes, name and address, thank you.
Yes, my name is Mark Menace. I live at 349 West 300 North here in Bountiful, and I have a couple letters.
I can pass them up for you if you'd like.
So I've given you copies of a couple of letters that I sent to Chad Wilkinson through Let's see, so I understand that you directed Chad to go back to the planning commission and review the standards so that we could provide more parking spaces for the older neighborhoods of our city. I gave you a petition back in July, you know, and I walked around the city and spoke with, you know, hundreds of residents, got over 1,000 signatures of residents that agree that we need to allow everybody an equal opportunity to install at least the minimum amount of parking that's required by the land use ordinances, so that we can have a place to park in the wintertime. So, so you directed Chad to go back and provide more parking spaces for the older neighborhoods of our city, and he came up with some terrific solutions. You know, I think they're great. There's a lot of them that I think needs to be modified, but other than that, I think they're good solutions. So after the planning commission approved his proposals, the next weekend, I took his proposals and drove around all the older neighborhoods of our city. And currently, 5% of the residents are prohibited from increasing their off-street parking. That's over 400 residences. And so in looking at his solutions and comparing him to the neighborhoods, I only counted 45 residences that would be able to increase their off-street parking. That's about 10% of the residences that are currently being prohibited. I don't think that's good enough. We need to solve the problem. We don't just need to provide solutions. Or if the solutions are, are good, but they don't, you know, really make a difference, then what good is it to go through all this paperwork and make these changes? So I guess what that means is either there's a lack of research on what the problem really is, or there's a lack of a willingness to solve the problem. So last winter, I drove around my neighborhood, and I counted nine residences that were parking vehicles on their lawns. And I think that really brings down the neighborhood. And so that's why I'm doing this, because we need to solve this problem. This last summer, four of those residences that were parking vehicles on their lawns took action and installed additional off-street parking. One of them took the, the single driveway out on the side of their house and made it a double. And now it looks like they violate the 50% side yard landscape requirement. Three of the others widened their existing driveway in front of their residence. So these are people that were parking on their lawns. The building department won't allow them to increase their parking, so they went ahead and did it anyways. It's like, we don't want to park on our lawns. So of the remaining three, two of them widened their driveways in front of the residences, and the third one dug up part of the front yard, put in concrete forms, and they've got gravel there right now that they're parking on, waiting the results of the outcome of this meeting, because they want a poor driveway. They don't want to park on their lawns anymore. So the only solution that will solve this problem is to allow every single-family residence to install a double-wide driveway or two single-wide driveways. And that's what the land use ordinance off-street parking requirements are. So if you flip over to the second page of that, the letter that I handed you, so I guess Chad sent me an email, and he said, "The code doesn't require you to install the," actually, this all came about because I installed an extra driveway at my house, and then I received a letter from the city saying, "You got to tear that out." And so I've gone through this whole process, I've learned a lot more about the ordinances than I ever wanted to, but, so anyways, Chad told me, "The code doesn't require you to put that driveway in, and you need to tear it out." And waiting upon the decisions from the city council, if they don't legalize your driveway, you're going to have 30 days to remove it. And so I said, I responded to Chad in this letter, on the second page, listing the codes that define the off-street parking requirements. They require all single-family residences to install four spaces, and they only allow you to park too deep in providing those four spaces. So based on that code, I was required to install it. And also, I had to put it in so I wouldn't violate another code parking on my lawn. So these four residences that put in driveways in my neighborhood last year, they're violating the code. And so if somebody files a complaint against them, the building department will go after them and force them to tear out their driveways. This needs to stop. I don't want any of my neighbors to go through what I went through this last year. I mean, it's a simple thing. I mean, we're talking about, the city requires us to park off the street in the wintertime five months of the year overnight. I mean, it's not that, what my neighbors have done is not offensive, and it's much better than having them park on their lawns. And so we don't need to change the codes, we need to change how they're administered. Because right here, the letter I just showed you that I sent to Chad, the code requires us to put this parking in, but he's choosing to say, "Nope, you can't put driveways on both sides of your house. You have to maintain 50% landscaping. You have to maintain 35 feet between your driveways." I live on a cul-de-sac lot, it's impossible to maintain 35 feet between my driveways. But I'm, I have 50% landscaping, but I can't put in a double-wide driveway, but I could put in two singles. My, I've talked to all of my neighbors, they're like, "We want one." We're not offended by what you've done. It doesn't bring down the neighborhood, it makes it better. So I'd like to touch on two other things to wrap it up. If you flip through to the third page, in this email that I sent to Chad, when we, when I put the driveway in with my neighbor, the street has such a big crown in it that I thought, there's no way I can put it in a city-approved drive approach. It's like a canyon. So I, I told the building department, "I'd love to put in a driveway approach, but the city needs to fix the street first." I've gone through here, and I've listed the slope of our street, and then if you flip over to a couple more pages, I've included a picture of our existing driveway. I parked my trailer over at Centerville Storage, and when I bring it home to load and unload supplies, since I resurfaced the street again this summer, I'm gouging the concrete approach every time I go in and out of my driveway. And the slope on the new driveway that I put in is even steeper. So I don't want to spend a couple thousand dollars putting in an approach and then gouge the hell out of it. But if the street, city will fix the street, I'll schedule the contractors to put it in right away. I mean, as soon as the weather gets better, but, I mean, I just don't want to spend thousands of dollars and then gouge it all up. It just doesn't make sense. And one last thing is the, the code that, or the proposal that Chad has, if you look at the bottom of the first page, this letter that I sent to Chad, and then he also put the picture that I, that I gave you next to it, he's proposing the eight-foot side yard driveway. I think that's, that's terrific. And a lot of people have an eight-foot setback, they could put in an extra parking along their house, but proposing to put a five-foot wide obstacle in front of it doesn't make sense. To go into an eight-foot wide driveway, you need kind of a straight shot, and if you put a planter right in front of it, it makes it really difficult to pull into that space. So I think it would be better, on a 12-foot wide, I think the planter works great, but on an eight-foot wide, it's, people will end up driving over it and then concreting it down the road anyways. And plus, they're hard to irrigate, so you end up with a lot of runoff from the sprinklers. So I'd like you to make that correction to that, that one proposal. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Menace.
Gary Davis, 2814 South, 500 West, here in Bountiful. I've sat through the planning commission meetings and listened to this on and on and on. There's a parking problem, yes. One thing I'd like to see is, oh, yeah, Chad and his group have done really fantastic. Ms. Harris mentioned something about thinking outside of the box. I think they've really tried to do that. Tried to come up, it's a very difficult situation, a lot of issues, and they've tried to come up with some really good solutions to it. I'd like to see something put in maybe, or some thought given to alternate surfaces. Everything that I've seen- Everything that I've seen and been talked about has been concrete or asphalt. There's a lot of other parking surfaces available out there. If anybody's been over in Europe or other parts of the world, they've got different ways of doing parking things. Cobblestones, little stones or whatever, rocks, bricks, things with grass and stuff in between. So you can still maintain the beautiful homes and gardens look, but still have parking available. That's it. Stay safe.
Thanks, Gary.
Taylor Crane, I live at 177 West, 1800 South. Want to thank Chad and the city council for considering these changes. I think these would do a lot of good. I personally live in an older neighborhood, I've lived in Bountiful my whole life, and just recently moved back, and I live in an older neighborhood now. And the changes Chad's proposed would benefit my home and allow additional parking. But I also empathize with the gentleman over here, and if additional changes could be considered to help more people, I think that'd be great, too. But just wanted to echo the thoughts of these other residents and let you know that there is a problem, and then these solutions are appreciated.
Thank you.
Sherman Wright, address is 906 South, 750 East. I apologize, I'm not dressed appropriately. I thought we were just here to listen tonight and not to talk. So the only reason I'm here is because purchased a home, it's right on the corner of 750 East and Mill Street. It's just about 100 feet away from the brand-new park that just opened up. I purchased the house for one reason only, it's just because it's directly across the street from my oldest and only daughter and her six kids, and her husband, and so... Moved here from Oregon. The driveway that we have now is not 16 feet wide, it's 15 feet and some inches. So in other words, you can't park two cars side by side without digging the doors. And so, as we were unloading and moving things in and out, we were continually up on the grass on the one side of the driveway. And so we thought, "Well, we've got to get that fixed." And on the other side, there's an old driveway that came up like a real steep angle, and the people that had the home before us had a gravelled area there where they were parking to get their vehicles off the street. And I knew from being down here over the years, we've come down to visit our daughter, that you can't park on the street in the winter, so I knew we had to get our vehicles off the street. And so, anyway, I was finally able to get a contractor to come and talk to me. Everybody's very busy right now. And he came and looked at what we wanted to do, was just as to widen our driveway and to pave that gravel area. And there's a patch of grass between the driveway and that other area. And when he came, he says, well, he says, "You can't..." What I would like to have done was made the whole side into a driveway-type curb-cut ramp-type thing. And he says, "No, you can't do that. You can't mess with the driveway, you can't mess with the curb and the gutter, you can't change any of that." And I says, "Well, okay, I just need to widen this out." And so, he looks at it, and he says, "Well, he says, 'Really, what you should do, instead of just widening this driveway and fixing that gravel there, just put concrete on the whole thing, and you don't have to mow it, you don't have to take care of it, it would just be a lot better.'" So I did it, and then I got a letter from the city saying that I had violated the codes, and so I came down and went to the planning area, hoping I could find some way that I could make it right, that I could fix it. First, I talked to a gentleman at the counter, and he says, "Hey, we talked a little bit, he said, "Maybe we can put some landscape here, or a fence here, or maybe we can do some of that." He brought up a picture of the house before we bought it, and a street view of it, and it just looked like heck. The area that was gravel when we bought it was just all weeds and tall nasty area. The driveway had a Volkswagen van with the front end torn off of it, and a tarp over the front of it, and the grass hadn't been mowed, and the trees, everything was dead. I says, "It looks 100% better than what that did." He says, "Well, that has nothing to do with it, it's against the code." And I go, "Oh, okay." I says, "Well, surely there's some way we can fix this. I mean, I'm willing to buy landscaping pods, I'm willing to dress this up, I'm not a slob, I mean, I'm here to... I don't want Bountiful to look bad." And so, he... And the long story short is that they just says, "Take the cement out." And so, I'm here as just pleading for some kind of intelligent way to deal with these situations. I don't think it's going to cause that much of a ruckus to have additional parking area for people that want to get off the streets. There has to be some kind of equitable, kind way we can look at this and not just say, "That's against code, you've got to take that $6,000 worth of cement out of there that you just put in there." So I'm hoping that we can take a look at... I like the idea that Councilman Harris said about thinking out of the box and making it possible where people can do with their property more what they want to do, but yet still have some kind of intelligent look at how it looks in the end. Quite simply, I think that's why Donald Trump is our president today, is because people are tired of the government telling us what we can and can't do with our property, "But you better pay your property taxes when they're due, or we're going to come and take it from you." But I just think... I come from the state of Oregon, which is real liberal, and they're very... They try and do whatever California does. But I... Nothing that's at my house right now wasn't parked at my house in Oregon. I'm not here to violate anything or make it look worse, I just want to be a happy, bountiful resident and do my part. But I think there has to be some kind of intelligent charitable way to look at how we deal with each of these. I was kind of surprised, I went to the planning commission meeting, and this gentleman back here brought a petition with 1,000 signatures, 1,000 signatures, and a map of Bountiful with 1,000... Was it 1,000 pins?
It's all the Bountiful residents from the petition.
Okay. With like 1,000 pins on this map. And he gave it to the planning commission, and they looked at it, and they kind of flipped through it, and laid it down, and looked at the map, says, "Thank you, that's nice of you." And then we moved on, and I thought, "Well, 1,000 signatures? You know how long it takes to get 1,000 signatures? We have to give... There's 1,000 people out there. I wasn't on there, so there's at least 1,001 people that think we need some additional parking in the city of Bountiful. So there has to be some kind of flexibility, and I appreciate your time tonight. I hope that makes sense, what I'm saying. I'm just saying that we need to think outside the box, and not just say, "Oh, we're doing a wonderful job, and Bountiful's a wonderful place, and let's not let these people coming from out of town violate what we've got." I love this place, I wouldn't mind living here till the end of time, but we just have to have some way to have some say over our property. Anyway, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks, Sherman. Anyone else? With that, I will close the public hearing, and I'll turn some time back to Chad.
Please flip the screen back on, Dyson. Thanks, Mayor. I think, I'd like to clarify just a few things, as far as what's been said. First of all, the request that we have one single-wide, or excuse me, one double-wide or two single-wide driveway in the city, actually, many, if not most, of the lots in Bountiful, you could do that. It's dependent on the width of the lot. If you have 35 feet separation between your driveways, you could potentially install two double-wide driveways on your property. So it's not something that can't be done now, it's just something that requires you to have the right spacing standards. You have to meet the spacing standards, you have to be able to meet the open space standards. If you can do those things, that's allowed now. Every single lot in the city has some type of a constraint. It might be size, it might be width, it might be some kind of physical constraint, like slope. There might be a floodplain running through the property. Every property has some type of a constraint. So not... It's difficult to come up with a one-size-fits-all approach. And as we said before, there is a process. If there's someone that really truly has a hardship, that can show that they meet the state criteria, a variance can be approved, and that process is already in place. We've tried to come up with some common sense standards that will allow some additional parking while maintaining those important considerations for open space, and for aesthetics, and for just being able to maintain some spacing between the driveways. I do want to just address really quickly, this is the property of the gentleman just was speaking to you, this is kind of an old aerial photo showing that grass space between the two. This is... Let's see. I think it might be that one, let's try that one. Might have to go a little ways in. So what occurred there was that the area between those two driveways was completely paved. So you've got kind of... That lawn area is not there anymore, just a concrete area. And unfortunately, there wasn't any conversation with the city before that occurred, that just occurred. We would have... We'd love to try to come up with creative solutions for folks, that didn't occur in this case, and so it makes it... It puts us in a difficult spot of trying to have to explain that, you know, it does not meet the code, that, you know, there's reasons for some of these codes, and in this case, that was what was done on that property. I want to go back and just, excuse me, talk about what happened on the property that's owned by Mr. Menace, and what kind of started this process. We don't have a good aerial photo that shows it, but the latest... Google has updated their street view just in the last couple of months, so we have a picture of that, if I can find that file. It might be easier just to go there. In that case, we had a situation with a neighboring property owner, Mr. Lee, that he had asked if there were some solutions to provide some additional parking on his lot. So, working with Reed Bangater, our Public Works Inspector, and Reed working with me, we thought that there was a way to interpret the code to allow for some additional parking by allowing the maximum width driveway to be built, which did place some concrete in front of the home. I'll show you what that looks like in kind of in the field.
So that was approved through a variance?
That was approved through an interpretation of the code. Yeah, just that's an allowed... When we saw the results, I don't know that either of us would feel comfortable doing that again, because it does place a lot of concrete between that home and that street, but that's what was approved. Unfortunately, this driveway went in without any kind of conversation, so we didn't even have a chance to work through any possible solutions. The difficulty...
Mr. Mayor, would it be appropriate to ask Chad a question while he's in explanation mode?
It's fine, please.
Sorry, Chad, as someone who's new, and I hope you'll indulge me and the council indulge me, just want to make sure I have all my details straight. When a person wants to put in a new driveway, tear out the existing driveway, repave it, that would require a permit from the city for the construction of that driveway?
For the driveway approach, yeah. We have an excavation, so the part that comes out and touches the street requires a permit.
And that dictates how wide the driveway is, the approach?
The approach, yeah, it does, but you can also go a little bit wider once you get into your property, yeah.
So when a homeowner or a contractor would come to the city for a permit with their plan, at the permit counter, they would then offer that guidance of you're meeting code or you're not meeting code at that time?
That's right.
So in either of these instances, was a permit sought so that they could get this council in advance?
No. Yeah. So going back to... Just want to finish my thoughts here a little bit. If you look at these two driveways, the issues in this case are that we don't meet that minimum open space requirement in that front yard. It doesn't meet that 50% requirement. This driveway actually is split between the two different properties, it doesn't meet the spacing requirement, neither here. I think, you know, we need to crunch those numbers. I know Mr. Menace had felt that he met that open space requirement in the front, he may, we'd have to crunch those numbers again. But in any case, even if the request that Mr. Menace has asked you to do, which is that double-wide driveway or two single wides for every property, even if you approve that, this part of this driveway would have to come out. It just, it wouldn't even, it wouldn't meet that code. And so this driveway would have to be significantly changed because of that code. They already have the double wide on the other part of the lot, so this would not solve that particular issue. Another thing to look at in relation to, just, again, driveways in general, and why we have some of these standards that we have, and why a one-size-fits-all approach doesn't work that well with driveways. Going back to cul-de-sac lots, we did talk about that a little bit, and I know Mr. Menace mentioned that in his presentation, but cul-de-sac lots have some unique challenges. And I seem to have lost my little pins on this one. Let me quickly go back and find those real fast. Sorry for the delay. I think when Google Earth crashed, it took my pins with it, so get those back here. So on a cul-de-sac lot, if two single-wide driveways or a double-wide were allowed on a lot with that small of a frontage, it would dominate that lot. There would be concrete in front of that particular home, there wouldn't be any significant open space. So again, just to make a broad standard that says either this or this is allowed for every home in the city, doesn't fit those types of circumstances. It would create some situations which we don't think fit the council's vision for I want to talk about a couple of other comments that were made in terms of alternate paving materials. Lloyd and I have talked about this a little bit, there are some permeable paving materials that could be something we could look at. We have floated the idea and even worked with some people on code enforcement issues to use structural pavers, not the kind you get at Home Depot that are an inch and a half thick, but actual structural pavers that can handle the weight of a vehicle in lieu of solid concrete. And we've allowed some folks to do that as an alternative material already, although not formally talked about in the code. So I think we're open to that idea, and the main idea is to have a hard surface so that we don't have track out of mud and debris, which again affects our storm drain system as those things are tracked into our storm drains. So, yeah, definitely open to that. I want to... There was one thing that I omitted, and I'm glad that Mr. Menace brought it up, because I forgot to mention it. He mentioned this drawing that's in your packet, but I forgot to mention it. This was a standard that we couldn't really put into words, so we just mentioned the figure. It's hard to describe what we're trying to say here, but our current code requires a five-foot separation between the driveway and the neighbor's property line. And that's just to try to get some separation so that the person's driveway is not right on their neighbor's property line. One of the issues with that is if we have someone that wants to expand their driveway to the side of their home to provide some additional parking for vehicles, or whatever the case may be, that we... There needs to be some type of a transition from that five-foot separation back. So as described in this figure, you have the five-foot separation that's shown, you'd have approximately five feet back before you'd start a separation, or a transition back to, right to the property line. That does create a little landscape area. There are examples of these that work in the city, folks that have done this and maintain that landscaping. We do think there is, it's important to have some type of a separation, because if not, then driveways are potentially right on somebody's property line and impacting a neighbor, and we don't feel that that's an ideal situation, having pavement right up to that neighbor's property line. So I did fail to mention that before, and that's something that we did look at, and I think that'd be a good thing. So I think that's all I had to say about that.
Chad?
Yeah.
So a question that I have for you, Chad, is this. Are our ordinances... Are our ordinances in regards to driveways, are they uncommon?
Do you mean are they different from other cities?
Right.
No, they're very similar to what other cities have.
Thank you.
Does anything in this change relax standards or, I mean, you know, restrict standards that are already in our ordinance? Or are all of these standards more about relaxing the rules?
Yeah, everything would be to allow some additional parking. So it's, it's creating opportunities. There's, there's a couple of clarifications that are already, they're already on the books, but we clarified those in terms of, for example, accessory, accessory garages needing to have pavement back to them. It's, it's in there, but it's not as clear as we'd like it, so we've clarified that. But the rest of, the rest of these standards are meant to just provide additional opportunities. They're not creating new rules, they're, they're allowing those additional opportunities. We have to, we have to create language to say that though, to authorize that. So it does create some additional code.
Any other questions?
So what would be the, tell me what would be the result if we said, on a property that's like, for example, in a cul-de-sac, if we said you can have, you can have two driveways or a double wide as long as you meet the 50%?
I think, the example that I showed you, I don't think they'd be able to with a double wide, it just wouldn't work. Probably not with the two singles either. Just, it's difficult to meet that 50% open space requirement and have that much pavement. I will say that a lot of those cul-de-sac lots have long driveways, and that, that does lead me to something else that I wanted to address. Our code does have minimum parts for single-family homes. We have a requirement of a certain number of spaces. What we don't do though is we don't limit the number of cars that can be stacked. That, that's not correct. We, we've never done that, and we have no intention of doing that. On a single-family home, you can stack four, five, six, seven cars deep as long as you're parked on pavement. Sometimes that requires people to shuffle cars in and out, but that can be done. It's not prohibited in code. So in some cases, a single-wide driveway that's very long is actually going to provide more parking area than just a standard 25-foot by 30-foot double-wide driveway going into a, you know, one of our, our modern garages. So it's not a question of do they have as much parking, it may be a question of what has to happen to facilitate that parking. Sometimes that'll require people to move cars and vehicles. One other thing, you know, thinking about, we've had a 5% number thrown out. We, we don't know exactly where that number came from. It was explained a little bit by Mr. Menace in the last hearing, but that we have, it's kind of a spitball at the number of driveways that might be out there. I think we have to ask ourselves though, I mean, what percentage of those folks that have single-wide driveways is this an issue for? We can all think of examples of folks that have one or two vehicles that, you know, maybe their kids are all grown, that the parking's only an issue at Thanksgiving and Christmas when we exempt folks from the, the winter parking ordinance anyway. So that hasn't been looked into that much because we don't get that many complaints about that type of thing. I don't, I don't know that it's as big of a problem as it may appear to be to some folks. I think that we have, we do have some complaints. We do get some people that park on grass, and we take care of those. Most of those people voluntarily comply with the ordinance and correct those problems. But, you know, I think that, again, of that 5%, how many people this is not an issue for, we don't know. So, and I think, again, some of those single-wide driveways can provide more parking than some of these shorter double-wide part, double-wide driveways can.
Any other questions in the council?
So right now, on a lot that's like a, like the cul-de-sac lot that we looked at, there has to be 50% plus the 35 feet.
35 feet separation.
Yes. Those are the two restrictions. So what would be the drawback of having one or the other, meeting one or the other of those requirements?
They, they kind of go together. I guess I'm not really sure what, what you're saying. So having, saying they either have to have 50% or 35-foot separation?
Mm-hmm.
I think if you have a 35-foot separation, you're probably going to have 50% anyway. I'm just trying to think of a scenario where that wouldn't happen.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it would ever help anyone, I don't know.
Because if you have, yeah, on cul-de-sac lots in particular, it's tough because the minimum frontage is less than on a typical lot. And so you don't have the ability to, on a typical lot, you know, if we have a 70-foot wide residential lot, which is the R-18, we call it R4 in Bountiful, but it's an 8,000-square-foot lot, minimum lot size, you can fit those two driveways plus the 35-foot separation. So again, we haven't counted, but my guess is that a majority of the lots in Bountiful would qualify for two driveways anyway, if they wanted them. And we, we routinely approve a second driveway for folks that meet those standards. So there are some that, that don't. We totally understand that. But again, it's hard to make a one-size-fits-all rule that, that can address all those issues. And some of these old cul-de-sac lots are even narrower than what we would allow now. So that makes an additional, additional constraint.
Well, I really appreciate your work on this. I know you've spent a lot of time and effort and work on this.
Thanks.
So.
Thank you, thank you, Chad. Any, if there are any other questions, I would, I would ask for a motion.
Before we vote on this, I just, I just want to say, this is a really tough issue, and I feel for the people who, who are involved with this. I mean, there are real people that are, you know, that have really suffered and that are really having a difficult time dealing with this. And so I really wish there was some good, easier solution that we could accommodate. And in, in doing a little research with these kinds of things, it's just so tricky because we can't just make exceptions for every single property owner, but we have to have some sort of standards. But it's, I really, this is a tough one, and I mean, I'm glad that in this ordinance, what we're really doing is relaxing some standards, but there are still some things that I think we could do to try to be a little more creative or, you know, I don't know. I know that you've done a lot of work on it, but I'd like to see it even further, you know, more work done. But anyway, that's how I feel.
Thank you, Ken.
How did the planning commission vote on this issue?
With, with the change from not including that front yard parking that we talked about, they specifically said, don't, don't forward that piece of it. It was, it was a unanimous vote to approve.
Look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the proposed changes to the driveway standards, standards as presented by staff.
Do I have a second? All second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is passed. Thank you.
So we probably need to, did you approve the ordinance, the 2018-13?
Oh, that was implied.
Okay, that's, it was by ordinance, we probably do need to do that specifically in the motion.
Okay, please, we'll repeat the motion.
In addition to the original motion that we approve, is it ordinance?
2018-13.
Yeah, okay. That we approve ordinance 2018-13 and compel the mayor to sign it.
I'll second.
Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you, Chad.
Thanks.
With that, Chad, I think you may be up still.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Stay right here for a minute.
Yes.
I'm really missing my keyboard right now. So this last planning item tonight relates to a new development that's being proposed in our downtown zone. The property is outlined here in red. It's on Fourth South. This is a proposal that's being made by Mr. Brian Knowlton to develop a six-unit multifamily development. It's on about a quarter of an acre. You can see the surrounding uses include single-family residential on both sides, commercial on Fifth South to the south of the property. This is actually an existing mixed-use development to the north that we approved several years ago with some commercial up front, some residential in the back, and then some other properties. You'll see the, Mr. Kenny Knighton's multifamily that he's built, mixed-use that he's built up on Third South. So that kind of gives you an orientation of where that lot is. Now I'm going to just bring up the site plan. Got to close a few things out here. So this is the proposed development. Again, six units of multifamily development. You can see the building is located close to the street as our downtown code requires with the parking to the rear. Taking a look at that site plan, you can, I'll zoom in a little bit so you can see that in a little more detail. The, the proposal again would be to have all the parking located to the rear or underneath the footprint of the building. The first unit, the unit on the ground floor, has been built to our standard that would allow for conversion to a commercial use in the future if that commercial use was desired. So it's got 12-foot ceilings, it's got all those elements that would allow for, as an example, if someone wanted to have some home office space or, that, that word just escapes me right now. Live-work, there it comes. Live-work unit, they could certainly do that, have a, an office on the bottom floor and then the living space upstairs. Now that's an important thing that I'm going to come back to later. The, the fact that that's set up that way weighs into how this site plan has been designed. The one issue that we had on this, the one major issue we had on this particular development is that it appears that over the years, some encroachment has taken place, and there wasn't quite as much room as what the developer originally thought based on the legal description. Looks like the lot's a little smaller than what was originally thought to be there. So we've required and asked that the developer, between now, this is just for preliminary approval that you're looking at tonight, so between this, here, between this meeting and your next review of this item, the detailed engineering design would have to occur on this site. As part of that, we're requiring that they have a survey to find out exactly how big this lot is. We know it's less than 165 that was on the legal description. We don't know exactly how big that is, but that will make a difference. Originally, we had a disabled person parking space that was included here on, on the site. For multifamily developments, our building official has looked at this, and because the ground floor unit is built in a, in kind of a townhome style with the living space up above, accessed via stairs, our building official has, has told us that that would not require the provision of an accessible parking space there. Now we'd still love to get an accessible parking space there, and we want to work between now, the preliminary approval and final approval, to see how much land we actually have and try to get that there, for a variety of reasons. We just think it's a good idea, you know, code or not code, whether the code requires it or not, we think it's a good idea to have some, some additional accessible parking there. Part of that is that, again, we talked about this being convertible space. If that ever converted to a commercial use in the future, they'd need to have that space. So we're going to work with the developer between now and that final to see if we can find that space to, to provide that. But again, based on, as submitted, that, that plan would not require that space. Go back to the elevations just so you can see those again. One unit on the bottom, the remainder of the units are up above. This is the design of the building, brick. The planning commission asked that they have a little bit more windows on this front. So that was one of the conditions of their conditional use permit that was approved by them at their last meeting. We asked as staff that they, because this will be the side of the building facing Fifth South, that they extend those architectural elements around that corner so that the building has that consistent appearance around all four sides, because that will be visible from Fifth South. It's a tall building, and you will be able to see it. So that brick be extended around that corner so that it ties that architectural theme together around that corner. One other condition that was asked for by the planning commission that'll appear in their conditional use permit is to have some trees along that both-side property lines. So they, we've got some shown on there. They've asked for some additional screening trees to be installed along both the east and west property lines, columnar-type trees that'll get quite tall to try to provide some buffering. They have two existing single-family homes now on either side of them. That could transition over time, but for now that would provide some additional buffering from those residences. I think those are the major points. Again, this is a preliminary site plan approval, and we will come back to you with the final site plan once we get that, the details of some of those issues nailed down. So with that, we are recommending approval, and the planning commission did recommend approval at the time that this packet was published. It was the week before Thanksgiving, so we didn't have their recommendation when this staff report was published, but they did recommend approval. And on this one, yeah, it was also a unanimous recommendation. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
There are no questions, I'll look for a motion.
Again, was it unanimous, did you say?
Uh-huh.
You did.
It was.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the preliminary site plan for the proposed sixplex multi-unit family at 55 West, 400 South, as presented by staff and with the changes made by the, or recommended by the planning commission.
And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion passes. Thank you, Chad. And we'll turn some time now over to Lloyd, our city engineer.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we have a request before you for the final acceptance of the Valverde Meadows subdivision. That'll be a familiar name to some of you on the council. That was approved back in 2015. It's a fairly small development off from 3100 South.
I remember it well.
Yes, I thought you might. This is a little bit of a unique development in that Bountiful doesn't serve many utilities there. In fact, it's in the South Davis Water District, so culinary water and irrigation are provided by them. Sewer, of course, provided by South Davis Sewer. The storm drain system in that development is a private system and is maintained by the homeowner on the corner with other responsibility from the adjacent homeowners. So the acceptance of this subdivision by the city really constitutes the perpetual maintenance of the street improvements. This, this subdivision was constructed a little bit differently than some of the other ones that we've done in the past, in that the developer constructed the road, meaning the pavement and the curb and gutter, and then left the construction, the sidewalk, up to each homeowner as the, as the homes were developed. And so the engineering department was actively involved in the inspection of all of that. And this development's now completed its warranty period. We don't see any, any defects during that period, and now it would be appropriate for the city to take over the maintenance of this project. I'd be happy to answer any other questions if you have some.
I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we grant final acceptance of the Valverde Meadows subdivision and approving the final release of the bond.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Blowers.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council.
Thank you, Gary.
Good to have the time tonight. I'll go over these rather quickly in your staff reports you want to skim over with me. In September, we talked about recycling concerns we had with the contractors. We had a pretty good work session with Lloyd and myself, and, and staff give us some direction to go. And so I'll, I'll report back on what we have found and see what your consideration is, will be for approval on these. First one is the ACE Recycling Agreement. That's out of the recycling department. After recycling, or after changes in the market in recycling, that ACE notified us that they will no longer be able to provide services without a modification to the agreement. So we provided some different options. The direction from the council was to negotiate terms of a service agreement with ACE for an agreement as extension. We did that. A couple of the major, and they're not real major, but a couple of term agreements was this term will remain in effect for a period of two years from the date of December 1st, 2018, unless terminated pursuant to the terms of the agreement. And recycle specifications. Contractor, which is ACE, will deliver all of the recyclers collected Rocky Mountain in Salt Lake City. Now, Bountiful City will establish a separate account with Rocky Mountain Recycling for any tipping or pro- any tipping or processing fees. So, that will help keep the costs with ACE down for us. They will provide the hauling service to Rocky Mountain. Okay? Some of the impacts, we talked about these, about the agreements wouldn't, wouldn't cause any disrupting of service. Extension would allow the staff the opportunity to better prepare for next advertised renewal process and hopefully we can get the market back up to where venture growth and we would be back up where it would cost us so much. Also-
And we do foresee that.
We are.
The national movement-
And after talking to Larry-
That US recycling facilities are trying to make up the gap between what China used to take and what we can take. Is that correct?
That is correct. And talking with Larry, and it is slightly improvement. It's going to take some time.
Yeah.
There's going to have to be some, some technology and things done here in the US to help take that off of-
But this is our bridge plan to, to keep recycling going in Banffel-
Yes.
Until that price comes down domestically.
Exactly, exactly. We will continue with ACE with the CPI, which is the Consumer Price Index, and that's noted in your staff report. That goes up every year, 3.4% this year. So, our recommendation, staff request the city council, continue having ACE recycling disposal, provide recycling collection service to residents of Banffel City for two more years effective December 1st, 2018. That was kind of quick, but any questions? Be more than happy to answer them.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the contract with ACE recycling and disposal to provide recycling collect, collection services for Banffel residents for two years more effective December 1st, 2018 as presented by staff. And I just wanted to make a note that, I think I was the, the person that made the original motion to, to start recycling in Banffel. So, it, it gives me great pleasure to try to extend the contract a third time now.
Thank you.
Very nice. Do you have that trophy, Gary, that we could hand to him now?
It's very small-
Okay.
And made of paper. I bet we can dig it up.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Good. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. And again-
Thank you.
Making a lot of residents of Banffel very happy.
Yep.
Yes, absolutely.
It's true.
The next was the agreement with Rocky Mountain Recycling. Rocky Mountain is a facility that ACE takes it to and they process it. They collect and sort and sell the materials. And once again, down, due to the downturn, it's necessary to enter a separate contract with Rocky Mountain Recycling to cover the increased processing costs. Staff contacted Rocky Mountain for options that would best financially be for, fit for Banffel City while the market recovers. Banffel City will pay Rocky Mountain directly for any tipping fees, processing fees, or any other charges that apply to the materials that are processed at their facility. This will allow ACE to continue once again, as I mentioned, to pick up material curbside, keep their costs as low as possible. There is a schedule there. I won't go through all of that. It gives you the list on the determination of the compensation to Banffel City as recyclable materials are based on an official board market. So, once we reach, right now, we're right at the very bottom of that where we're paying $55 a ton for that material. We won't be able to see a, a compensation from them until we reach the $120 a ton mark. We're hoping this occurs soon, but with the market like that, we have no clue. So, this will help buy us some time and we'll watch the market and I'll be able to work with, with Larry from Rocky Mountain and we'll keep an eye on it and see where we're, where we're headed. We agreed, we agreed that these, this term would be for approximately five years, starting December 1st, 28th, unless extended by mutual written agreements. Now, I did five years on that, so that'll leave us some option after two years with ACE to see where we wanted to go with that. So, in the contract also, it says that we can, we have that opportunity to meet on mutual terms to go only the two or three years also.
Can I ask? This is kind of unrelated, but do you know if Banffel residents do, I know that one of the problems with recycling is that people are putting in things that are not really recyclable.
Contaminated.
Yes, contaminated. So, do you know, and it's fine if you don't, but do you know if Banffel residents got really good at recycling so that they weren't putting in contaminated things? Would that affect our price?
It would, it would affect it a little bit, not a whole lot. Banffel is actually one of the better cities in keeping contaminants out. After talking with Larry and running some numbers, the general majority global-wise or nationwide is 30%. Banffel's about 10%. So, we're not too bad. We could still do better with education and-
10% of the things we have are contamin, we put in are contaminated?
Yes, yes. So, we're not as bad off as what the big numbers say, according to him.
Thank you. Sorry for the detour.
No, no problem. So, the significant impacts, you can read down that if you want. One of the big ones that affects especially me where I, landfill director, is it will keep on extending the landfill life by keeping that material out. Even though it's, the tonnage is 215 tons a month, the volume is huge because it's all lightweight. So, the more airspace we can keep, the longer we can keep that landfill going. It's money safe, many well-earned. So, staff recommends that the city council approve the Rocky Mountain Recycling Contract using the landfill reserve for replacement account to cover the costs.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council?
I have another question.
Please, please.
Now, the recycling industry, since we've been involved with it, is, is, is pretty fluid. As you recall, the first contract that we did had some, had some fuel surcharges that would kick in-
Yes.
-when fuel reached at a certain point.
Yes.
And, and they, they didn't ever top out, so we didn't have to, we did pay some, some surcharges-
Surcharges.
But we didn't have, we didn't pay the maximum surcharge, correct?
Correct.
And I think that's kind of what we're doing here is that we're, we're paying a little bit of a surcharge until the-
Till the market.
Till the market comes back.
Yeah, and it will. It'll just take time. I have, I have a good faith in, in what I've learned and what I've been reading and it is, it is improving, but it's going to take some time. It will.
Gary. Any, any other discussion? I'll, I'll seek a motion. What was that, Kate?
Oh, is this hazing for the new person? I'll make a motion to approve the staff request with the city council to approve the Rocky Mountain Recycling Contract using the landfill reserve for replacement account to cover costs.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That motion passes. And again, Gary.
I think I am-
Oh, you're done.
Done.
Oh, you're done.
I'm done. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. We'll turn some time now over to the chief. Chief Ross, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight and request your approval to purchase new workstations for our patrol officers, detectives, problem-oriented policing unit, and records. Funding for these workstations has been approved in our fiscal year 2019 budget. Our current workstations were purchased approximately 24 years ago when our building was built and have outlived their usefulness. In fact, I'm actually impressed that we've been able to make it this long and, and keep them somewhat together, but they are falling apart. It is time to replace them and also adjust the layout, particularly on our patrol division to better accommodate the needs of the department. We have solicited and received the following three bids from vendors as part of the purchase process. Interior Solutions for $105,286. Workspace Elements for $104,282. And CCG Office Furniture and Design for $92,094. We recommend accepting the low bid from CCG for $92,094. We have done business with CCG in past years with furniture and are confident that they will deliver a product that meets or exceeds our expectations. We will be coming forward later on with some additional workstation replacements for supervisors in the office areas, but we wanted to get this on the table so that our old workstations will be utilized in the temporary city hall to allow city hall to function. So, the planning of getting these ordered and in, it was important for us to move this forward. There, there were no significant impacts and I'll be happy to answer any questions that any of you might have.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve the purchase of new workstations from CCG in the amount of $92,094.
And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Chief, you have some new workstations of which maybe I'll be in one at some time when we're remodeling. Who knows?
I'll give you a spot.
Who knows? Good. Thanks.
Mark, do you want me to take this?
He didn't come for nothing.
Right.
Though I do appreciate that covering for me. We monitor the efficiency of our pumps and motors throughout the city. We have over 40 of them and so there's always something going down. And we, we notice that the production out of one of our pumps at the Kamara Booster Station was pumping less and less than it did at first. And so, when you get to 10% to 15% of efficiency and have to run the pump, the motor, you know, 15% more to get the same amount of water, it's prudent to change it out because the cost in power will pay for it over a period of four or five years. So, so we've decided to upgrade that pump station. One of the pumps and motors still pumps what it did originally, so we're not going to upgrade it. Just one pump and one motor. We got three bids for the pump and the motor and CH Spencer, $26,750, and Delco Western, Nickerson is $27,814. We're recommending we take that bid because that bid includes the removal and the installation of the new pump and motor. If we were to hire someone to do that for these other two bids, their bids would exceed Nickerson's by over $1,000. So, that's why we are recommending the Nickerson bid. We were able to come, to get pricing for, from two companies for the control panels for these pumps. We're going to upgrade both of them. They've become obsolete and hard to service and, and so the prices we got was $30,840 for, from Electro Power and Energy Management, $32,335. And the panel installation in either case would be $3,980. So, we're asking for a total of $62,07, $62,634 for this project. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to-
Look for a motion.
Did you have, did you have funds forecast for, for pump replacement that this has fallen into or is this an un-scheduled repair?
We, we budget an amount for a, a upgrade-
Not knowing where it's going to go?
Based on what our analysis is of each pump station. And so, we put this in the budget when we started noticing that it was headed downhill.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mark. Any, any other questions, council? If not, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll, I make a motion that we approve the purchase of one pump and one motor supplied and installed by Nickerson Company for a total cost of $27,814 at the Kamara Booster Station.
Second?
So, you want me to keep?
There's more, yes, please.
Keep going.
The purchase of two control panels from Electro Power Utah for a total cost of $30,840 and the installation of the controls by ID Electric, a total cost of $3,980.
Second.
That's my motion.
Good, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Mark, just a question. We don't have very many people. It made me ask a real question, a real quick question with a real quick answer if you could. So, we know up on Davis Boulevard that we have Weaver Water that's drilling up there. They put some, they put some sound panels up there. Do you have any information? I, I get some, I imagine others of us have probably gotten emails about the sound and if I understand it right from Gary, those pumps, I mean, that drilling has to go on 24 hours a day.
It does. They can't stop.
And for how long? But the question I had was, do you know how approximately, how long that may be?
I'm hearing about two more weeks. The reason it's gone on so long is they got a drill bit stuck about 100 feet deep and they spent about 14 days trying to retrieve that bit. And so, that slowed them way down. So, the process gone on quite a bit longer than they planned.
Yeah, okay. But have they, do they expect to be successful? Do you know? I mean, they haven't gotten water.
They, they've got a little bit, but until you get it drilled and do some development on it, you really don't know.
Okay, but, but they're kind of expecting maybe a couple more weeks. I just haven't known what, not that I'm trying to put Weaver Water on a time schedule, but thank you for that.
I will try to nail that, nail that down better and let Gary know.
Yeah, maybe let Gary, just let us know a little bit because I think we're, it's a nice place to be able to answer because it's kind of an unusual one since it's not Banffel that's doing it.
Yeah.
Doing the drilling. Did you have something to offer? Okay, thanks, Mark.
I heard that it was an alien landing pad.
Yeah, oh, you did?
That's what I heard.
I thought I was fishing in, in there somewhere and didn't want to get caught. All right. Okay, so, this last item, we'll turn it over to Gary though. And this was Clint's item and he's not with us, so.
Thank you.
Well, I mean, he's with us, but he's sick.
He is, he is still with us, as far as we know.
Technically.
But, yes. He'll be very sad to hear that he's no longer with us.
Right.
Make sure and let him know. Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have before you an interlocal cooperation agreement with the city and South Davis Recreation District to construct and operate an ICE facility, an ICE ribbon in our new plaza. Following the direction we received from the city council tonight, we'd look for your approval of this interlocal agreement with the addition, and unfortunately, I gave you, apparently in your staff report, you have an older version of the resolution. So, I would ask you to add this paragraph. This would be paragraph two, letter D, under the city's obligations. And this would be updated based on the direction we received tonight. "The city shall allocate up to $2.27 million toward the city's capital construction and purchasing requirements." So, our recommendation would be to adopt this resolution with that change and then we will take this to the REC district for their consideration in just a couple of weeks.
Good. We asked a lot of questions. Are there any other questions? If not, we'll look for a motion.
I just want to make a comment. So, I'm, I'm sure that no one's thrilled about having it, having the costs escalate like we didn't want them to. And I, I was kind of having a hard time wrapping my brain around that, but I do think it does, I am gratified. I am glad to know that a lot of the money is coming from RAP, RAP funds and then also the fact that it was the number one choice on the public survey of what people wanted to see for downtown. And I do believe that it will have an impact with economic development, with vitality for downtown, which is a big purpose, a big point of this. And so, that's what makes me want to support it.
Thanks, thanks, Kelly. And just by way of interest, Gary said his scouts are the young men, young women, they ask them what they want to do and-
We did our annual planning for the year-
Annual planning.
-a week ago and there was no prompting by me. We just asked them, you know, to brainstorm and, and guess what? The number one voted activity was that they want to do in the upcoming year. Ice skating.
Ice skating. And where's the fire district going for their Christmas party? Ice skating at the Gallivan Center. Okay. So, they want to get as far away from fire as they can. Okay, with that, I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution 2018-13 and the interlocal agreement between Banffel City and the South Davis Recreation District for the construction, operation, and maintenance of an ICE ribbon.
With, with the changes?
Well, with, with the changes on funding-
As explained by staff.
As explained by staff. Thank you, Gary.
That's perfect. Thank you. I'll look for a motion for a second.
Second.
Second by Kate. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And, so, if there aren't any other, anything else from the council? Y'all, y'all okay? You ready to go?
Mayor, I move we adjourn this meeting, go home so I can put my chickens to bed.
Oh, my gosh. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Good. Done. Thanks for all of you who were here for the whole duration.
Is everybody, is everybody good for the Christmas party?
This one?
Yeah.
This one? I think I am. I haven't looked at my-
Any date conflicts?
Can you do that?
December 3rd.